All right, I have 5:30, have a thumbs up, so we are calling this meeting to order. This is the Mayor and Board of Alderman recess meeting, just for those of you who may be viewing in. We did meet telephonically last night, and then we immediately recessed until tonight in order to handle business with deference to the inability of folks to get to the board meeting and to get access to our City Hall conference room, boardroom here. So, our first item will be to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll follow that by an invocation by Alderman Sistrunk, and then a moment of silence. So if you would stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alderman Sistrunk, if you would, please.
Loving God, send down upon those of us who hold office in the city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose we may faithfully serve in our offices to promote the well-being of all our community through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
All right, thank you again, everyone. Just for a note for the board members, Mr. Huskisson is on the line. So while we do have full attendance here, we do have the city attorney as attending by telephone. He didn't want to make that trip from Columbus to Starkville. I told him if he lived here, he wouldn't have that problem, but he didn't think that was too helpful. So, all right, so let me go through this. We have, we will be needing to approve the official agenda with the consented items, but I do want to let the board know that we have two, we have pulled two items, both public hearings, one with, that is the variance, the other one that is the special exception. Both of those are pulled, we will be bringing those forward at the February, at the February 6th meeting. And the, under the public appearance, I think I have confirmation from Mr. Burnett that the Byram Construction folks have pulled their desire to make their public appearance. So, we have notice of that by text. And then the last item that will need to be pulled from the agenda is under Human Resources. We have noticed that Mr. Gibson has decided to remain with his existing employer, and so we've pulled item G under Human Resources. So with that, I will poll the board for any other changes to the official agenda. Alderman Rupp, any changes?
Ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
Ma'am.
Alderman Bailey?
Mayor, I was passing the signing sheet to Alderman Sistrunk when I missed. What, what was the first one? Was it the, the public hearings on retail centers on the town?
The two public hearings have been-
You're going to defer that to the legislature?
Yes, they will come to the February 6th meeting.
Okay.
Anything else, any changes? Okay, all right, thank you. Alderman Sistrunk?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. That being the case, I need a motion to approve the official agenda with the changes in the consented items as presented.
Approve.
Okay, that was in stereo. Alderman Vaughn, I believe I heard your voice?
Sir.
And second, Alderman Rupp, yours?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, motion carries, that would be. All right, with that, I will read the consented agenda items. First is consideration of amendments of the December 19th, 2023 recess meeting of the mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Second is under Mayor's Business, consideration of calling for two public hearings to adopt an ordinance requiring professional retail centers of a certain size to install security cameras for entry and exit areas and parking lots. Under Board Business, we have consideration to approve Ms. Ethel Shine as the sole applicant to fill vacancy with Octobahaw County Heritage Museum Board for a three-year term that will begin January 17th, 2024, and end January 17th, 2027. Under Airport, we have requested approval to enter into a lease agreement with the, for the second floor of the South Hangar with Air Care Helicopter Medical Services and the City of Starkville contingent upon accepted modifications to the agreement by Air Care. Under Finance Administration, number two, we have acceptance of the December 2023 financial statements. Fire Department, we have request permission to accept a grant from Firehouse Sub in the amount of $18,308 to purchase two Paratec Highway Strut Kits from NAFCO, the lowest quote, to assist the Starkville Fire Department with motor vehicle accidents. Under Information Technology, we have request approval to purchase 200 Microsoft Windows user licenses from Howard Technologies for $9,000, the lowest of two quotes. Under Parks, we have consideration of accepting the sole source quote from Musco Lighting LLC for the control link system for the newly installed lights at the JL King Football Field, JL King Park Football Field, for a total of $16,000, and that they are the same as other city parks and can be set on current timer control panel. Under Police, we have consideration to apply for the fiscal year '25 Police Traffic Services Enforcement, 100% reimbursable grant, for the continuation project of PTS enforcement in the areas of overtime enforcement of speeding, seatbelt, and child restraint enforcement. B is consideration to apply for the fiscal year '25 405D Alcohol and Drug Impaired Driving Enforcement, 100% reimbursable grant, to be used in the area of approximately 600 hours in overtime for DUI enforcement and DUI equipment. C is request authorization to declare the listed police department seized vehicles as surplus and advertise for sale to the highest bidder on govdeals.com, discard or sell directly to a scrap dealer with the proceeds to go towards the state forfeited funds line item. D is request authorization to declare the listed Starkville Police Department items as surplus and advertise for sale to the highest bidder on govdeals.com, discard or sell directly to a scrap dealer. Under Utilities Department, we have consideration to accept emergency authorization consistent with presidential determination number 2022-19 from Howard Industries, Inc. to purchase 10-50 KVA, 10-75 KVA, 2-100 KVA, and 10-167 KVA Transformers in the total amount of $638,374. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, my pleasure. Okay, first item is Mayor's Comments, and we were going to have employees introductions, but we're not going to obviously require those folks to come in from distances, so we will be doing that at some other point in time when it's easier to get here than it is currently. I, I do want to send out a personal thank you to our departments. In particular, I want to acknowledge Chris Black, who has, by his lonesome, has stayed in town for the last three nights at a hotel, and he came in and is just extremely tired, and I don't blame him. He said they've offloaded like four pallets of salt around town. And he was kind enough to drive me around yesterday morning and look at all the streets. So he's been, he's worked, he's done some hard work. So I, we really appreciate him and the street department. Certainly the police and fire department as well for their work in the cold temperature, being out, making sure the streets are, giving us reports on the streets and making sure they're clear and taking care of those things. And I talked to a fire department guy yesterday morning, and they were talking about all the runs they had made that night. So we really appreciate them. And then certainly utilities for being on standby. I don't think they had a whole lot of things they had to go do, but that's always a good thing, but they're, they're still on standby for us, so we appreciate that. Other than that, I don't know of anything at this point in time. Anyone else? Alderman Rupp?
No, I'd just like to reiterate my appreciation as well.
Okay. Alderman Brooks?
Ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Bailey?
All right, thank you.
Alderman Sistrunk?
Just a reminder that the regular garbage pickup schedule resumes tomorrow, a little later than usual, Mr. Smiley, or about the same time, about the same time tomorrow? So, okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, everyone. All right, citizens' comments. Do we have anyone who wishes to come under citizens' comments? Mr. Turner has called me and told me he will not be here this evening, so we appreciate knowing. I don't have to worry about him because he's not here. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we have, the public appearance has been canceled, as I mentioned. We have one public hearing, and that will be the Smart Bus Transit System, and Alderman Dum, former Alderman Dumas is not with us this evening, so we will, we will wish him well wherever he might be that's warm, and allow you to come on forward and do, do the deal. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor and Board of Aldermen, for having us tonight. I know we were supposed to be here last night, and I text Jeremiah and he said, "I'm not going to make it," so we got to take the run. So I said, "Okay, not a problem." So with that, just our public hearing, kind of give you all some numbers of where we were, where we're going. Just as a reminder, we're 5311 rule math, rural math transit fund. It's through the Federal Transit Administration, passed through the Department of Transportation. All administrative and capital is an 80-20 share. Operational costs is a 50-50 share. We run fixed routes, we run flex routes, we do pair transit on demand, and we participate in a regional and statewide coordination effort to try to make transportation available for people around the region. For counting the year 2023, just to kind of give you some fixed route ridership numbers from FY '22 to FY '23, we actually increased by a little over 22,000 riders for this year. We had a total ridership of a little 470,000 for this year. The most important part of that is 44% monthly average was in the city routes, which that's continually growing, and that's where we want to grow. We know we're going to care students, but we need to get the city, you know, more ridership going there.
While you're doing this, I'm going to ask a question, because you're fiscal '21, we, we went through COVID, and we know that dropped off. Do you, in tracking this, is this higher than any other year that we've had?
No, you, I'll have a slide later-
Do you? Okay, I'm sorry.
-that'll show you from 2019 to-
I'll shut up, don't you make your presentation, I'm sorry.
That's okay. But, no, we're not back to where we were pre-COVID, but we're slowly getting there, very slowly. Which is the very next slide here. So this is our monthly ridership from 2019 through 2023. Of course, you can see 2019, '20, we had a real high spike, the COVID hit, went down, '21, and we're steadily drawing those numbers. They're steadily coming back to where our monthly ridership is gaining a little bit as we go. Part of that, you know, part of that with our ridership numbers too is, you know, when we first started the system, we were hand counting. We're now transitioning everything into electronic counting when you get on and off the bus. There's something that counts for you. We're still meshing all that together just to make sure we're getting, we're getting true ridership numbers. Pair transit ridership for '21 and '22, it's an increase, 18% increase for the year. We increased by 1,111 trips. That's a service that we're very proud of, of those people who need to get to some type of medical or whatever, have no other way to get there, that we're, we're able to take those, for those trips. We have seen a big increase here, again, and also not just with medical appointments, but anything life sustaining for them. Need to go to Walmart, hair, you know, hair appointment, you know, wherever they need to go, we're scheduling those appointments as we can now, which we're seeing that, which is a big, a big issue for them. Just kind of pair transit rider numbers from 2017 to where we are in 2023 with the lifts. So you can see for 2023, we're up to over 7,000 lifts for 2020, or 7,000 rides for 2023. So we expect that to continue to grow. We're down one pair transit driver right now, and we're announcing that position hopefully next week to try to get back to four vehicles running for pair transit. Accomplishments, continued growth of the fixed route pair transit ridership, continued increase on the city routes, overall ridership numbers, finalizing cooperative bus purchasing contracts. We've not been able to purchase any buses the last two years just because of supply and contracts and MDOT being able to get approval of contracts. So, we've been working through Mississippi State University's purchasing department to develop our own purchasing contracts. We actually purchased some buses a couple of years ago off an Oxford contract just like this. So we're doing our own, that other municipalities could use our contract if they wanted to, to purchase some buses. So, we're trying to get all the specs and everything lined up now and put all that out for bid. We've added the Blackjack Red Route has been an addition, and then we're finalizing an internal driver training program. It's with a lot of bus industries across the nation, there's a shortage of drivers. So we're currently down 14 drivers. We've had, done everything we could to try to get drivers, so we have developed our own training program internally to be able to hire somebody that doesn't have their CDL, put them through the training, and then get them their CDL, and then put them to work for us. So we hope to have that up. I've got some documents to finalize, just kind of per se, make sure they're good to go, but once we get that done, then all that will be in place, and we'll start advertising that.
What's your starting hourly rate?
14:07. With a, we're 14:07 with a 50 cents increase for the first five years, and then year six through 10 is a dollar increase, so you'll cap out at 10 years. Now, you'll see, when we do our budget numbers, we're asking MDOT for a 10% pay increase for drivers just because of where we are in trying to get drivers. Proposed for 2025, as I mentioned earlier, with over $7 million proposed budget for FY '25, going back to the 80-20 or the 50-50, right at $3 million will be the local cost share, 2.5 million Mississippi State, 24,000 or 241,000 from various contracts and advertising, and 100,000 from the City of Starkville. Just a map of our routes. We, we adjusted these last year. There seems to be, we've got good, good things going on with these routes now, the way we've got them. We just updated our route schedules and kind of tried to make them a little more defined, so people can see when a bus is coming and not have to, you know, be calling, "Hey, where's the bus?" or whatever. So we're, we're kind of streamlining those route schedules and putting them on a quarter hour of where they're getting to certain stops along the route to make it a little more effective for our riders. Our goals, fully implement our driver training program that we talked about earlier, and then finalizing our corporate purchasing contract for our buses. And with that, I'll answer any questions anybody might have.
Okay, anyone have any questions? No? Anyone? We appreciate the service, for sure. Do you want to open it as a public hearing, as part of this process, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Anyone here wishing to speak to the Smart Bus and its grant program and its application for the coming year? Anyone wishing to speak to it? All right, yes, ma'am. Alderman Sistrunk?
I, I think it's a, a service that really benefits a lot of our community. We, those of us who have access to other transportation don't always see that, but I do think it's a tremendous benefit to our community as a whole. I also think that the pair of transit service is an incredible opportunity to provide a service to residents that lets them stay in their homes and helps them maintain some independence. And, and that's just, that's money very well spent by the city, I think.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We, we're proud of our pair of transit program because our numbers continue to increase there. We want our rider, our overall ridership to grow, but being able to provide that service to somebody like you said, to be able to stay in their home and still do the things that they need to do, whether it be medical appointments, shopping, that's what we want to try to do.
Well, and I'll echo that for, for multiple reasons, but also for the purposes of having, having transit in our community. Y'all have been very flexible in checking your routes and seeing where the need is. I think it also offers our business community a world of service for their employees. So I just think it, it is really a huge benefit to us, and I appreciate that y'all continue to go after this grant. And our ability to help you, obviously, is not as much as we'd like, but if we were, you know, if we were flush, we'd probably ante up a little further, but as it, as it stands right now, we do what we can to be supportive, so.
We appreciate that.
All right, so, all right, anyone else? And if you would, please, just for the record, if you would state your name, because I didn't get you-
Ronnie White, Director of Transportation.
There we go. Thank you so much, I appreciate that. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. With that, we have the remaining items, or two items. One is under engineering. This is consideration of approval of the Burns Dirt Construction, Inc. as the lowest and best bid for the Spring Street Mississippi Highway 12 Pedestrian Improvements Project. Mr. Burnett, would you like to make a little brief presentation on this, please?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, for me. As the board knows, we received two bids for this project, and at the time of the bid opening, Byram Construction was the apparent low bidder. But after we reviewed the bid, it was noted that a few of the pay items, I think three pay items, were zero-dollar bids, zero-dollar unit prices. And so Garber Engineering, which is our consultant, quickly sent a recommendation letter to reject the bid as a regular. Regular is a technical term from MDOT. Based on that, and so they checked with multiple engineers on their side of 30, 40 years' experience. We've done the same with MDOT, and no one has ever seen a zero-dollar unit price. And so by its very definition, it could be called a regular, because, because no one's ever seen this happen before. So the defining MDOT section, we call this the red book, states that proposals may be rejected for specific reasons. One of those, and I paraphrase here, is from Section 102-07B. It says that irregularities of any kind that may make the bid incomplete, indefinite, or ambiguous to its meaning may be rejected. So you'll notice that it says may be rejected. The community does not have to choose to reject it, but they may reject it. So the reason that we're following Garber's recommendation is because we feel that accepting zero-dollar unit prices sets a precarious path going forward for other projects, because you don't know the intent of a contract when they bid zero dollars or something. You don't know if they're saying, "We're, we're not going to do this work." You don't know if they're saying, "We're, we're not going to do this work," which is a problem, or if they're saying, "We're going to do the work for free," which could also be a problem, because let's say that that pay item increases by threefold or tenfold here at Construction, well, the unit price is zero, and so that is really a slippery slope. So we don't want to set that precedent now that that's an acceptable way to bid going forward, so we have followed their recommendation to reject the bid as a regular for such. And I will say that this has no reflection on Byram Construction's work for the city. We have a great working relationship with them, they do great work. It's nothing of that sort, this is really just a technicality for bid.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Burnett? Any questions? Alderman Beatty?
Oh, as you do, Rupp.
No, no, your lips were moving. I wouldn't give you the opportunity to say something.
There's no way, I guess, because Byram was going to come tonight and didn't come, so we won't know why they left those pay up.
I think that we could ask after the fact, but you know, with the, with the legal procedure of bidding, you, you really can't disclose those kind of things until after the business award.
And that was one question I would ask, had it been here tonight.
Yes, sir. I don't know the answer to that question.
Anything? Anything further? Okay, that being the case, thank you, Mr. Burnett.
Yes, ma'am.
I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, move to approve the recommendation from the engineering department from Alderman Rupp. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you. And last but not least, we have a claim stocket. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Alderman Brooks, do I have a motion for approval? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Rupp. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All righty, motion carries, thank, thank you, everyone. And if you'll allow me to read the call of a work session. In accordance with the notice required under Mississippi Code, annotated 254113, board will have a work session on Friday, the 2nd of February, 2024, at 11:00 a.m. It will be held at the City Hall, Second Core Conference Room at 110 West Main. Notice should be provided of the work session with one hour of this meeting by posting such notice at City Hall. Notice should be made a part of the minutes of the board meeting. The work session will be open. Public meeting of the city of Starkville and the public and press are invited to attend. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Alderman Vaughn, thank you. Do I have a second?
Sir.
That was stereo. Alderman Beatty, I'm going to take it from you.
Okay.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.